Thank you very much. So we have a few items before us this afternoon. The first of which is, oh, sorry. So this is getting ahead of myself. So next this afternoon is Committee of the Whole. And this afternoon, we have all council members present, so more than a quorum. And we have a few items before us this afternoon. The first of which is Agenda Bill 23063. So this is regarding City Council appointment of an alternate mayor pro tempore for August 18th through the 25th of 2021. So from August 18th to the 25th of 2021, both the mayor and the current mayor pro tempore, Pinky Vargas, will be out of town. And so City Council needs to appoint an alternate mayor pro tempore to sign contracts and otherwise serve as mayor pro tempore during this time period. And for this item, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Flewood.
You just said everything that needs to be said, hoping to take a few days off in late August. I understand Pinky's taken some time off too during that period. And so we just need another pro tempore. In the event someone is needed to come down and take care of official business, like signing contracts, that sort of thing. And if the big RIP 9.0 hits during that time, they'll be required to deal with that. My understanding is Councilmember Vargas has spoken to, I'll let her speak to this.
I have not. I totally forgot that I was supposed to ask Jean if he would be willing. So at this point, I'm so sorry. I totally dropped the ball on that.
I'm, I'm close. I'm only a few blocks away from work, so that'll work out for me.
Thank you.
Great, wonderful. So it sounds like there has been a temporary appointment nomination. Is this a matter that we vote on now and then again this evening? Or is this something that the mayor will bring forward during his report?
I believe you can vote in Committee of the Whole to make a recommendation for approval and then formalize it this evening.
Okay, that sounds great. So there's been a recommendation that Councilmember Knudsen serve as mayor pro tempore from August 18th to the 25th. Do we need a second? Oh, it's just a recommendation.
I can make a motion if you, that Jean serve as mayor pro tempore.
I can second your listening.
Okay. So the formal motion's been made by Councilmember Vargas and a second by Councilmember Lilliquist. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? I guess even if Jean wanted to vote against it, you'd be outnumbered. So thanks for volunteering. So that passes 7-0 and we will bring that forward this morning. I mean, this afternoon or this evening for final approval. So, thank you. So the next item this afternoon is Agenda Bill 23064. So this is a discussion of council feedback on proposed opiate treatment facility. So the State Department of Health has received an application for certification, for certification of a new opiate substitution treatment program, OTP. The applicant is Bellingham Treatment Solutions and the proposed location is 3240 Northwest Avenue in Bellingham. The Department of Health will conduct a review of the proposed application and is required to issue a certification if the OTP meets requirements outlined in state law and the Administrative Code. The Department of Health is required to consult with the county and city legislative authorities before approval. So the Department of Health requests to receive comments by July 28th of 2021, which will be Wednesday of this week. And so this item is coming before us this afternoon for a formal discussion just before the entire council. There've been correspondence initially sent by Michelle Weatherly with Washington State Department of Health, who's a facilities program manager, just explaining that this item would be coming forward and there will be a public hearing. It's in the, it's in the packet. So on page 137 is the notice of the hearing that will be held on August 4th. But in advance of that, Jackie Mitchell, as well with the Wacom County Health Department, Jackie's behavioral health program specialist had reached out to get feedback from the City Council as a legislative body. And obviously not being able to speak, I don't feel even as president of the council on behalf of the will of the entire council, wanted to bring this forward just for a discussion. We don't necessarily need a formal motion, but we could make one if there was support for the proposed facility. So Councilmember Hamel and then Vargas.
So I'm not familiar with, I've, I've heard this organization through the work that I do as the Baber Health Chair on the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force, but I don't know their track records. I can't really speak to that. What I can speak to is the need for MAT medical assisted treatment in the community. We are off the rails on opiate. I rode with the Community Paramedic last week and they said that there's this new type of drug called Hulkeys or school buses. And they're a combination of fentanyl and benzodiazepine, which is a muscle relaxant. So the, um, this, this program will treat through MAT the opiate component, but it won't treat the benzos. It also doesn't treat methamphetamine, which has no medical analog or equivalent or use. So I'm supportive of this. We need it. It's, I just wanted to put that out there that it's not going to fix everything, but it'll, it'll sure help if it's done correctly.
Councilmember Vargas.
Thank you. You know, locally and across the country, we are facing a huge opioid epidemic. So I think this is something that I'm, I'm in support of in regards to how we can help our community tackle this crisis. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve permission for the proposed opiate treatment facility.
Second.
So I was just gonna, I know this motion may have made by Councilmember Vargas and a second by Councilmember Knudsen. I believe, I don't believe that they require our approval in way or the other, but it's, it's support. No, but I think a motion in support of the project might be cleaner, but I'll defer you.
I can, I can modify my motion to, yes. Go ahead and modify that. Is that all right, Elizabeth?
Yes, I, I wrote that you moved to support the recommendation of the treatment facility.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Oaks. And so that second still stands by you, Councilmember Knudsen. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes 7-0. Thank you very much. So the next item before us is Agenda Bill 23051. This is an update from the City Attorney's Office regarding potential modifications to the timeline for initiative petitions. So City Council adopted Resolution 2021-16 proposing an amendment to Article 10, Section 2 of the Charter to reduce the number of signatures required to propose an initiative. The goal of the proposed Charter amendment is to increase the number of petitions initiated by community members. Council recognizes that initiative petitions often suffer from legal defects that may subject them to legal challenges. Therefore, Council asks the City Attorney's Office to research the method for modifying the timeline for initiative petitions to ensure that council and staff have adequate time to draft an alternative initiative bill dealing with the same subject if necessary. So this is a sort of a follow-up to requests made at the last meeting. And for this item, I'm going to turn to Senior Assistant City Attorney, James Erb.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. Can anyone hear me okay? Great. So Article 10 of the Charter outlines the power for citizens to engage in direct legislation. However, the Charter doesn't include too many specifics about the procedure or the timeline for initiatives and the processing of initiatives. Instead, BMC Chapter 102 contains more detail the timeline for processing and submitting initiatives and things of that nature. So under the Bellingham Municipal Code, petitioners have to submit a proposed initiative petition within 12 months of the election during which the measure would appear on the ballot, which means really as soon as November, initiative sponsors may bring forward a proposed initiative petition for the following November. Okay. Once that happens, the City Attorney's Office has 10 working days to work with those petitioners to draft a ballot title for the measure or measures that are submitted. After we submit, draft a ballot title, the Finance Director submits that to the county auditor and that starts another 10-day process during which anybody may challenge the wording of a ballot title. So if sponsors of a petition got the earliest start possible, then they could begin collecting signatures as soon as December to get an initiative on the ballot the following November. There is a requirement that all the signatures have to be collected within six months under state law. So if sponsors go out and start collecting signatures in September, in December, for example, they would have to submit those within six months or else the earliest collected signatures would fall off and they would not be counted towards the sufficiency of signatures for purposes of calculating the threshold needed to qualify for the ballot. So what's interesting is our municipal code, it counts backwards from Election Day for the deadline for which people have to submit the signed petitions. It provides 130 days from Election Day is the deadline for which people have to submit their signed petitions in order for us to count them. And that's typically in late June, when you, when you do the math on that. Conversely, in Wacom County, the Wacom County Code provides that once the ballot title goes through the publication process and those challenges resolved, the, it counts up. It counts up 120 days and says you have 120 days to get signatures after your petition has been deemed sufficient. We count back from Election Day. So, so it does create some interesting issues here for us at the city. Once the petitions are submitted to the city, the Finance Director sends them over to the county auditor to verify signatures against the voting rolls. The auditor has 30 days to do that verification and typically takes about 30 days. I understand from Ms. Oaks this morning that the city has just received these signed certificates of sufficiency for, I think, initiatives 2021, 2021-03 and 2021-04. And we are now at the end of July. Which brings me to the next deadline, which is the county auditor needs to hear from the council with respect to whether they put any of these measures on the ballot for November by primary day, which is next Tuesday. So as you can see from that timeline, if initiative sponsors wait until the deadline in our code to submit their petitions, it's a really compressed schedule for the council to review these items and to take any action on them, including maybe considering an alternative measure that could be submitted to the voters. I want to pause here for a moment to reflect that in Bellingham Municipal Code 102040F, there is a grace period allowed. So if the initial verification of signatures comes back as insufficient, then the initiative sponsors are supposed to get an additional 20 days to go out and collect signatures. However, the county auditor has notified me, and I believe council as well, that that creates an impossibility for her and her staff to be able to go back and verify those signatures and get us that answer and allow council to take necessary action before the, the hard deadline for getting something on the ballot in November. So during the last meeting or the meeting before that, when council was considering resolutions for Charter amendments, one of those amendments would remove the grace period from the Charter. And if that is passed by the voters, I would recommend that council also bring forward an amending ordinance to make sure that, that grace period is removed from the Bellingham Municipal Code. So there's no inconsistency between our Charter and our code on that particular issue. And if the, the fundamental question that was asked of our office at our last meeting was how to amend that timeline? And it would require an amending ordinance to amend the Bellingham Municipal Code that could be done by majority of the council at any time. And if council wants to provide that direction to the City Attorney's Office, we can, we can draft an ordinance for your consideration. As, you know, whenever, whenever you'd like us to do that. There's no deadline for us to take that action. As I mentioned previously, there is, there are two Charter amendments that are current in November that may affect the number of initiative petitions that we receive on an annual basis. And to make sure that everyone's aware of the rules going forward, you may want to act sooner rather than later if you choose to amend the timeline at all. And without, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Erb. Councilmember Lilliquist.
James, thanks for going over all those various dates and how they're counted. And given that and how they count in different ways, if we just changed our, presuming we could change it, if we just changed our ordinance to say 150 days before the election or 160 days before the election, would that work? And would it interact well? The county has their own 120-day clock, but they just have to satisfy both clocks. They have to know that one clock might run out before the other one, but there'd just be two independent clocks and the petitioners would just need to line them up. Am I, is that accurate? Would it work? Could we do that and would it work? And would it, there be no conflict with the county? No absolute conflict?
Yeah, so I think if I understand the question correctly, there's not a problem with our code conflicting with the county's code and how they manage their initiatives. I was just pointing out, they count up, we count, we count down. And so it creates timelines that don't line up exactly. And that's fine. Auditor has no issue with that. The bigger concern is making sure that council has enough time for initiatives that are deemed sufficient to get, to get before the voters or I guess that are deemed sufficient to become initiative bills, that council has enough time to review those and take one of the four, you know, designated actions that you can take on them. For example, you know, council could vote to take no action on an initiative bill, in which case 30 days later, the Finance Director would notify the auditor to put it on the ballot. But if you, if council took no action on any of the four initiative measures today, 30 days from now would be too late for the county auditor to take action necessarily, to put it on the ballot. And without council taking, make it on the ballot. Now I'm speaking hypothetically because council's already, I believe, adopted resolutions stating that it's going to defer these to the voters or, I beg your pardon, maybe passed a motion saying it would defer these four initiative measures for 2021 to the voters. But, but it's kind of tying council's hands. And then additionally, the bigger concern is if council wants to consider alternate bills dealing with the same subject matter to put both the council's bill and the sponsors' initiative bill before the voters in November, you know, council needs time to do that. And if you only have one council meeting to look at what's coming before you and then take appropriate action, that's not going to leave you any time whatsoever to propose an initiative.
Would 150 days, do you think, give the council and staff enough time to develop alternatives if we wanted alternatives?
Yeah, I mean presumably that would be an additional two council meetings, press timeline in terms of allowing staff to draft alternative measures if needed. But, but certainly two more council meetings and additional 30 days is better than nothing. Also, if you're going to take away, or if the voters decide rather to take away the grace period, then you know that you actually do have a true 100, or you do have that additional 30 days, right? Because you're not going to get that eaten up by the grace period if the initial count is insufficient. Does that make sense? Sorry, I was answering a question that wasn't asked.
No, it does. I think I said 150, which is only 20 more days. But I'm, I'm, I'm totally open to whatever might be the best number, just enough to give us enough time. What is that number?
Yeah, I mean, it, it might even just be better rather than counting days to just insert a firm deadline, right? So right now, the problem is we're getting initiative petitions notice that they're sufficient in late July. You know, there's nothing that would suggest that people can't submit their initiatives by the end of April, for example. Give the county auditor the month of May to review them for sufficiency. And then you have June and July as a council to review those and take appropriate action. So, you know, I don't think, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a method of calculation in the code. Council could just identify a date certain by which this is the deadline. If you're proposing initiative measures, you've got to get them submitted by, you know, April 30th, for example.
That was going to be my proposal, and I guess related to that is a question. Are there any statutory guidelines with respect to the auditor's certification of those signatures as far as the time required or allotted to do that? Or is that fluid?
I believe that under state law, the auditor has 30 days to verify the sufficiency of their signatures.
30 days, okay. Because I mean, my feeling is, is that if we, as a community, right? If voters decided, if that threshold is lowered as far as the number of signatures, I feel like we have to do our due diligence to make sure that then on the flip side, that council has sufficient time. So I would defer to staff to try and find out, you know, what is the optimal amount of time, you know, by which we want to have that answer from the auditor from that deadline, right? Out, how much time do we want? And then figure out what that, that deadline would be. But Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I also prefer a firm date, like we all know when our taxes are due. But I also like the auditor to be checked with, especially if we're saying something like April 30th, because I'm just thinking filing deadline. I, I just don't want a date that conflicts with a really high peak time for them to process some information regarding elections also. It's been a few years since I filed, so I forget the exact date, but it's pretty close to that. So I would just want to make sure that we're avoiding that. But I think it's much more intuitive for people to have a date that they know that's it. But I also agree with other council members that we need a few city council sessions in order to be able to address if we want to redraft and put forward a comparable submission that it has less legal issues. And also because, you know, our meetings have just been squashed a bit to deal with this. And if we had something really urgent coming through, I want to make sure we have time to do both and not have to drop our other city council duties because of a requirement that we get through these and address them. Sufficient timeline, as long as they know well in advance and they still have the, the signatures are still valid. Let's give both of ours the time.
I would say if, if council would make a motion, we would bring forward an ordinance and propose a timeline and you could change it as you see fit. If we could get a motion and get that direction, that would be great. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on is, this is related. I, I want James to comment. We've sent some emails to council, but on the deadlines that you face currently with the pro and con statements on the four ballot initiatives that are going to be on the November ballot.
Okay, so I guess let's address items before us first as far as direction on this point and then take up the pro and con statements. So, Mr. Erb, you're looking for formal motion tied to direction? Or I believe that's what the city attorney is asking, right? Okay, Councilmember Lilliquist.
I've moved the City Council request to administration, the city legal staff to develop an ordinance to change the date at which the initiative is due, such that it would give the City Council enough time to pose alternatives if that was desired.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Lilliquist and a second by Councilmember Knudsen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes 7-0. And so moving forward then to what City Attorney Mariner brought up is tied to, yes, the deadline, which is looming, which is August 3rd, for the auditor's office to have the names of those committees or pro and con statements for all four of those initiatives. And as Mr. Erb mentioned, yes, we received from the deputy clerk the copies of the official certification for the last two that we'd been waiting on. So all four have been officially certified for the ballot or the signature requirements to go forward with the ballot. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Since we're talking about ballot initiatives, I don't know if it's best to talk about it now or in the evening session, so perhaps some direction from Mr. Erb or Mariner. I had sent an email requesting information about the pro and con statements as far as timing, how are they coordinated? Is there coordination? Where do they go? And thank you very much, Mr. Erb, for sending that response. But there, I believe there was a suggestion to make a motion to direct the request for pro and con statements in order to alert the community that that is available and that if you could possibly speak to what that would be for information. And then is this something that should be brought forward tonight to vote? Or is that something that could be brought forward today during the day's session?
Sure, Councilmember Anderson, thank you for that. So I think there are two different, two related issues here. First is, I'll, I'll take them in reverse order. So council has until next week's meeting to adopt the resolution appointing individual community members to draft the pro and con statements for each of the four initiative bills that have qualified for the ballot. So that is your deadline for doing that. You certainly could do that today if you were able to or you, you had the names of the people that you wanted to appoint to those committees. But I don't know that you have those names yet. So in my email, what I suggested is that council could immediately begin notifying the public that it is soliciting kind of applications from volunteers to draft those statements. Typically in the past, the, the pro committee is made up of the prime initiative sponsors, if you will. So the, I think it's the People's First Bellingham Group came forward with these four initiatives, did a lot of work to collect signatures to qualify, qualify them for the ballot and, and clearly has a vested interest in the outcome. So they may well volunteer to draft the pro statements for all four, which makes the job of finding volunteers much easier. However, the con statements is a different animal. And so what I was recommending was either begin advertising on the city's website, the council's social media accounts during this meeting, during tonight's meeting, that council is actively looking for volunteers and groups who would consider drafting those con statements so that they can be appointed no later than next Monday, because the county auditor needs those names by next Tuesday to begin working with those folks to meet her deadline for getting those statements included in the, the voter's pamphlet. I don't actually know what that hard deadline is, but I imagine Ms. Bradrick could tell you what that hard deadline is. And I know it's rapidly approaching.
So if I can ask for a clarification, because again, this is my first time through this and I've had a couple of people ask and I really didn't know how to provide information. So if council requests for the city to put, either to contact directly the proponents of the four initiatives to do a pro statement, or if, you know, we put out there that the opportunity for con statements are available, who would they contact in order to create that list in order to move forward? Looks like Councilmember Stone's waving at me, so maybe she has.
So I just wanted to alert the council as well as legal. Deputy Clerk Oaks forwarded correspondence that we've just received from Sage Jones, who was the author of those four initiatives from People First Bellingham, that the auditor told them to reach out to the city and that she is requesting to be committee chair on writing the four statements for all four of those initiatives and that she will provide the name of the other two authors prior to the deadline. So I just wanted, in light of time, that just came in. If the council is in support of that, yeah, then we could respond accordingly and we would just need to focus on the, the no statements.
I'm just wondering, who would those inquiries be directed to with the city? Would that be the mayor's office? Would that be our council president? Who will be collecting those contacts of interest?
That's a great question. Our code doesn't really speak to this. My recommendation would be if they come into the council office for your, whom to appoint to those committees.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my question for Deputy Clerk Oaks since she was the one contacted. And I believe that was perhaps at the direction of the auditor's office. one contacted, and I believe that was perhaps at the direction of the auditor's office. Yeah, I was just going to confirm whether there were any specific directions, but otherwise it could certainly be the council office. Ms. Oaks, do you have a preference regarding how that's handled?
There isn't anything in the code that that specifically speaks to it, but I'm fine. That's a function of the clerk to to take care of the elections.
If you're in agreement with that, my preference would be to have it go to Ms. Oaks' attention as a deputy clerk, just in light of the short turnaround in time that we're working with, to sort of cut out as many middle people as possible, but certainly keeping in touch with with Ms. Oaks. And then we can bring that forward for a formal vote at the next meeting. And keeping in contact with Ms. Oaks, obviously, we need, yeah, if there aren't names coming forward, then we would need to take supplemental action before before Monday's meeting. City Attorney Mariner.
Yeah, so we could bring forward and include in the packet for the next council meeting. I think, I think, James, correct me if I'm wrong, that a resolution, it'd be helpful to know if the pro is going to be the initiative sponsor, so we could fill that part of the initiative or the resolution in. You would, at your next council meeting, select the committee to make the con statements for all four. But between now and then, there's a process that needs to occur to advertise that you're looking for committee members to to draft those con statements.
And so my understanding was that that would be initiated by council staff. But I would be open to direction. I don't know if this has been addressed by the city previously, but recommendations, if there are such, for for where to publicize that advertising. Councilmember Vargas.
I think previously we have done press releases that go out community wide, so to to our, all of our local papers, et cetera, and put it on the city's social media. So I believe that the city has taken that initiative before to do a widespread request. And I think that went through our communications through now Janice Keller, if she's willing to take that on.
I would also suggest the city's website.
Okay.
So.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. It's so hard, because in chamber, I'd probably just chirp up. So, Mr. Mariner, do we need to make a motion to to request our communications to draft and send out the invitation for pro and con statements? Or is this sufficient in order to be able to initiate the process? Does it need to go through a motion?
Well, it'd be, it would be helpful to have a motion on, if you have an idea on your pro statements, so we have that part done, or whether you want to advertise for both pros and cons. It'd also be helpful to hear from, if you're going to involve the communications director, I think she's on, whether she's available to do that, just so we know who's doing what. But as far as, I think the one thing that we'd like a motion on is if you have it, if you have, if you feel like you know what you want to do with regards to the pro statement, that would be helpful, because that helps us drafting the resolution for next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mariner. Yeah, that was going to be, my request was a motion from the council regarding the correspondence, I guess, from Sage Jones and People First Bellingham regarding the pro statements and if the council's in support of that. Councilmember Hamel and then Knutson.
I'll make a motion that the pro statement writers are the initiative sponsors. That includes Sage Jones, but she mentioned some other people. So I want to just, I'll just say initiative sponsors at this point.
Second.
So motion's been made by Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Knutson?
Well, we could include, what we did in the past is we just send that out, pro and con. So they all come in at the same time. They have them in our packet at the same time, the pro and the con. So, I mean, if we've already made up our mind, which we haven't seen the names that they have brought in for the pro yet, you could just make the motion that we may, that we send out for pros and cons, and the list will come back and then we vote. It can be done either way.
So I guess the direction from the city attorney's office was that if there's any, if there are decisions that can be made sooner rather than later, that will help with the workload that we're up against on a short timeline. Further discussion or feedback from council? And then I will follow up further with Director of Communications. So just on this motion to, I guess, to have Sage Jones and the People First Bellingham and the other authors to be named by them to handle the pro statements. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, that passes 7-0. And so we would be, Councilmember Lillquist.
So that's the pro statement. I assume with the con statement, we're just going to do the whole advertising blitz we talked about.
Well, that's what we're getting to now, because we have the Director of Communications online, but I know that there's a lot going on right now. And so, yeah, I guess to focus on how we want to handle advertising for the con statements and would certainly be welcome to feedback from Director of Communications, Janice Keller.
I think it would be a great idea for Hannah and Elizabeth and I to just check in and figure out what we need to do. So we'll take care of it.
Okay. Councilmember Hamel and then Vargas.
Are you looking, do we need a motion for that? Or can that just be head nods? Because I totally support it, or I'll make a motion if we need to.
Alan?
I think that's sufficient. I think we have sufficient direction.
Okay, Councilmember Vargas.
Well, I was just going to say that maybe our staff support, maybe Nalini, could possibly help. So it, the whole weight doesn't fall on Janice, but if the council's in agreement, maybe Nalini can help support making that happen.
Absolutely. I was thinking if, she stated if Janice and Elizabeth and I can meet, I guess, to finalize direction and then certainly call in support from council staff as well, that would be great. Deputy Clerk Oaks, are you on board with that? Okay, I see a head nod. All right. Well, thank both of you very much for your willingness to collaborate on this as we find and navigate our way. Any further discussion on these items? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward. So the next item before us this afternoon is Agenda Bill 22013. This is the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force Annual Report. The Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force was formed by the Watcom County Council to review criminal justice and behavioral health programs, recommend changes to reduce incarceration of people experiencing mental illness and chemical dependency, and safely reduce jail use for pretrial defendants. The task force includes representatives from criminal justice and law enforcement, policymakers, service providers, and consumers of services. The task force co-chairs will present the annual report, which describes activities and programs to reduce incarceration. Recent accomplishments include opening a crisis stabilization center and the creation of a law enforcement assistance diversion program known as LEED. The task force also adopted a racial equity toolkit developed by the Government Alliance on Race and Equity GARE to inform future task force activities. And so this afternoon, before we introduce the guests, I didn't know if Councilmember Hamel, did you have any introductory remarks or care to comment?
I don't want to steal Jack and Stephen's thunder, so I'm just going to listen here with that. They have to say if I want to add anything, I'll do it at the end. But thank you for the invitation.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hamel. And so, yes, with us this afternoon, we have Stephen Gockley and Jack Hunear. And I don't know if you have a preference regarding who goes first, but welcome both of you and thank you for your time. And the apology that we're running behind schedule, so thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Councilwoman Stone. My name is Jack over here. Dan, thanks for the not wanting to steal our thunder. You're welcome to take it. And it's good to be here. I especially want to acknowledge the city's desire to have this information. The city has a long history of being extraordinarily supportive of the efforts of this task force. I do want to start with calling out a few people. Mayor Fleetwood, since he's taken office, has been, I think, at practically every meeting and been fully participating. Of course, Councilman Hamel, he's not only a participant, he's, I believe, Dan, he chaired the behavioral health currently and is very active in many of the initiatives and brings a lot of things he sees in a lot of places together, like whether that's Kahoots and Eugene or other things, and is extremely active. Darlene Peterson's been phenomenal from the beginning. She's an original task force member and has consistently provided really excellent data that's helped inform our work. Chief Simon, since she's been in that position, has been fully participating. We appreciate the support from, that you've given us, from Mark Gardner. He's made our reports look much, much better. I hope I haven't left anyone out, but I just, I guess I just really want to bring to your attention how many city resources have been allocated to and how much they're showing up. And we all get tired of, well, I mean, all of us, many of us get tired of meetings and attending things, and we've had a lot of support. I was a resident of Bellingham. I grew up in Bellingham, Parkview, Watcom, Bellingham High. I currently live out in Ferndale. I was thinking, you're talking about the Bloedel Dock, so I actually think things like that actually tangentially help our community as a whole and kind of help with some of the goals we're having. And I appreciate the community of Bellingham and how Bellingham in many ways is at the vanguard or forefront of trying to have alternatives and a lifestyle that I think encourages the goals of the committee. Yeah, so I, yeah, I just had a little bit of a flash, I remember the old docks, like some of you do. So the history of the task force is, we, I would say, I've been on it since the beginning, so has Stephen. I would say probably we wouldn't have been formed had it not been for the energy around a jail. So as most of you know, I won't get into the soliloquy on that, but there was a couple of close votes about a jail, a lot of community discussion about a jail. And within that, the county council, and this is particularly for the benefit of those on this call that may not know this background, there was a thinking that if we can reduce incarceration by default, hopefully we can reduce the need for a jail. And maybe if we got the right people around the table, we could agree to reduce incarceration and we could, you know, prevent people from getting in the system. And it would seem ideally that's a nonpartisan type of thing that almost anyone would support. It reminds me generally of something like a food bank. Most of us support food banks. We might debate how much to give them, but this idea that you help those that can't help themselves in meaningful ways seems to be something that most folks agree with. And I would say for the most part, the task force has been very successful. We intentionally, intentionally avoided the issue of the jail. I was sitting on the task force during the second vote, but the task force managed to keep its missions aligned with the goals of the task force. That's important, because I think it allowed us to really make some progress. That progress became really apparent during COVID. Many of the initiatives that were largely spearheaded and initially promulgated by the city of Bellingham with electronic home monitoring and diversion programs became the de facto method of choice during COVID. So when the pandemic hit and the system that we knew could no longer operate, the strategies that had been encouraged in many cases were expanded. There were already contracts, there was a familiarity with many of the things. Like my own son, I adopted my son when he was 10 out of foster care, and he's 23 now. He's a challenge, you know, I mean, all the trauma and issues you'd get if you're a 10 year old abandoned and, you know, adopted out of Tacoma. So he's got a thing on his ankle now that will tell you if he's drinking, so the police know if he's drinking. And, you know, with the thing on, he's pretty good. With the thing off and drinking, he's not so good. Those were things that weren't possible prior to the technology and the willingness of the prosecutor's office, the probation, the criminal justice system to allow that to happen. He also has a two-year-old. So I'm really happy that he is home with a two-year-old, not drinking and not drinking and driving. And I think the more those types of things, and this is obviously anecdotal, but the more of those things we can do and the less people we put in that, I don't mind calling it a horrific facility at 311 Grand, I mean, that concrete building, most of you have been in it, it's, it sucks. It's not cool. I mean, to me, it's borderline criminal to put some people in there. It's not, it's not okay. It's not what it was in the 80s. Anyway, keeping people out of there were appropriate, as long as public safety can be met, has been the goal of the task force. And during COVID, we also had a significant impact, like every other entity doing this kind of work, to our ability to fulfill our mission. Meaning, we didn't meet for, what was it, Stephen, six or eight months at least? I mean, months we didn't meet, we didn't know what would happen. And many of the people on the task force found themselves working extraordinary hours with things related to the pandemic. So it certainly had a chilling effect on our ability to do our work. But we actually got rolling again earlier than many groups and started meeting again and had the advantage, if you want to call it that, of seeing how some of these programs that we had advocated for and became and had encouraged the system to become familiar with, were making a difference and were, were working. And I believe one of the silver linings of the pandemic are some of the things we've learned that can be done with technology that we didn't know we could do before. And that certainly has applied with the task force. In our presentation today, I wanted to talk quickly, which I have, about the history, some COVID impacts. I'm going to talk briefly. We divided our work into four primary committees, because we recognize the task force as a whole, I'm not going to repeat what's in our annual report, but if you look at the names on there, of the 27 guests, and here's the person, the camera, I mean, if you look at these 27, these are, these are really busy people. And I, Stephen and I facilitate this meeting, but it's hard to have robust conversations with all 27 of us. So we've divided some work into some sections. There's certainly crossover, particularly behavioral health and our legal and justice systems often find themselves, in fact, they're meeting together, so. We divided into four groups, the Crisis Stabilization Facility Committee, Behavioral Health Committee, the Legal and Justice Systems Committee, and the Information Needs and Data Exchange. I forget who named it, but the acronym is better than most, INDX, Information Needs, and so they got a good acronym out of that one. Yeah, I will tell you that. I'm on another committee without such a good acronym. But anyway, INDX is a good one. So I'm going to talk briefly about the Crisis Stabilization Committee and the Index Committee and identify a couple of external communication challenges we're having, opportunities. And then Stephen is going to talk about behavioral health, legal and justice, and also talk about some current legislation and our advancing racial equality, the GARE and some other things that the task force has integrated the last year. So let me start with our biggest success. And if you were to look at the original, the original ordinance, I'm looking at it that the council adopted, in large part, it was focused on this crisis stabilization facility. We were calling it a new detox. There'd been talk in the community for a long time about the need for that. The facility accommodated, I think, 13 people, I think there were seven or eight beds for substance use disorder and four or five for mental health, sharing a space where you had, you know, curtains around people's beds, not much privacy, less than ideal, and always full. Law enforcement's ability to take people there and divert was very poor, always full. So there was this vision of improving that that had been around for a long time. Ultimately, the new facility has 32 beds. Now, it's, it's almost two facilities in, under one roof. There are 16 beds that are substance use disorder, or some of you might think of that as a detox, people with addiction, detoxing issues. And then 16 beds for mental health respite or acute mental health. The reason those numbers are what they are are largely governed by federal Medicaid policy. The 16 bed is, in many cases, a function of that. The, I would especially call out Mayor Linville for helping as we went through the permitting process. I think she had Kurt. out Mayor Linville for helping, as we went through the permitting process, I think she had Kurt Navafeld and some others at planning that really kept an eye on this thing. It was an odd, when I say odd, it was not a typical facility. It's not like a single family residence or a duplex. So the city of Bellingham, again, thank you, really tried to help work with the architect and the county to get the thing done. And it was a unique facility with some unique challenges. It's currently up and running, fully functional. It's been highly used. We unfortunately are yet to have good data on how much diversion's actually happening there. But the good news in that is we will have that. The reason we don't have it is because of the issues primarily around COVID, as well as starting up. The data we do have is very myopic. We don't have enough trend data yet to really give a meaningful report of, you know, 22 people were diverted this month or whatever the numbers are. What I can tell you is it's being used. Local law enforcement was very involved in designing the handoffs, and the goal was a 10 minute handoff. The goal was for them to know there's an ability to take people there. The goal was to have a resource in our community that would divert people from jail and sometimes the hospital in a way that they could be stabilized and safe and be treated, I think appropriately, as someone with a disease or an issue of that, more so than some kind of a conscious moral poor choice. And I think that's reflected, I don't know how many of you've been there, it's a nice looking facility. They kind of tried to make it look good from the outside. The architect put some, and I said, it looked a little bit like the Disney Grand California Adventure. Not really, tried a little. They could have done more to have that lodge look, but they were trying to give a little bit of, less of an institutional vibe to it. So that's the big news. Now, with that accomplishment, the biggest challenge is the operational funding. And Watcom County took a big chance. I think the facility was around $12 million. A significant portion of that was a commerce grant. There was another community, I forget which one, that turned down the commerce grant because they were confident that if they built it, they could do the operational funding. So Watcom County, with the support of the city and other entities, made the decision to go forward and with the help of our local representatives, finding funding for a period of time. But there's no doubt that the ongoing operational funding of this facility is an issue because it just is. There isn't a template of what that looks like. The behavioral health dollars are in flux and how those reimbursements are done. I'm guardedly optimistic it'll be solved. It is solved, I believe, Stephen, for the next few years. Anyway, there's some stopgap measures in place. But you're likely to hear more in the future about how do we do the operational funding. I'm talking specifically about the people that work there and the actual costs of running the facility. So anyway, I could talk forever about that, so I'll stop there. The good news is it's up, it's running, it's good. Check it out. And the county is working at having more communication with individuals or organizations that might refer people there. So whether, so just imagine whether that's doctors, police, religious folks, whatever it is, people that meet people in crisis, knowing that that's a resource is a really important thing. It's a wonderful thing to have in our community. On the, oh, and if you have questions, we were going to hopefully have you give them at the end, but if you have a clarifying question, like if I give the wrong number or can't understand what I'm saying, please interrupt me and I'll be happy to clarify. On the Index Committee, this is the data committee. It was, my recollection, it was largely started because Ken Mann or Councilman Mann kept saying, who's in the jail? And we couldn't answer the question. We really couldn't answer the question. And so what became obvious is we needed data. We needed data that the committee could use for planning, and we needed the different committee entities to be using the same data for the same planning. And it won't surprise any of you that that's much harder than it might appear. It simply is. So our approach is meant to gather the low hanging fruit. The sheriff's office particularly has been wonderful. There's a system called Spillman that they have really integrated. When you think of all the courts with the small cities in the county, of course, there's Bellingham's courts, there's different police departments, there's the prosecutor's databases. When you look at all the databases, there are some challenges in getting the data we would like. And so those challenges have not been overcome, but we're further along than we were. I think it's fair to say, I think Stephen and I would tell you that probably of all our committees, index, I would say Stephen has the most work ahead of him. I mean, right now. I mean, where we want it to be and where it is, is a bigger gap than any of the other committees. That said, there is awareness of that. There is attention to that. And we're trying to balance the desire for data with the realities of the resources necessary to accumulate that data because that's always, that's always the balance. The last thing I'm going to talk about is our external communication strategies. We believe that much of the work of the task force would benefit from broader public awareness. Again, no surprise to any of you, many folks in our community think nothing's being done, everybody's locked up, there's no resources for anyone. That simply isn't true. There certainly could be more, but my experience with decision making bodies like the Bellingham City Council is in most cases, there's a great deal of interest in doing what can be done in this area and helping citizens that need the type of services that this task force advocates to accomplish. So we do think, when Jill Bernstein and I were the co-chairs, Jill, Stephen succeeded Jill, we used to do some of, we did some radio programs. There was some stuff in the Herald. You know, it's hard to say what the best way in Watcom County. Oh, we did the city club at one time. So I think we do plan to do more of that. Stephen and I have talked about how we can do that. We were talking about it, then COVID hit, and then we were just happy to try to meet again. But certainly, another thing on our radar is this idea of how do we communicate what we're doing and let the community not only feel good about it, but offer ideas to the task force or let us know if they have ideas. The last thing I want to say is County Executive Sedu would like to potentially have a name, which I think is actually a good idea, for the Crisis Stabilization Center that's, you know, sexier than crisis, not sexier, more appealing than Crisis Stabilization Center. So what we've decided to do is let the community know. It could be, you know, Executive Sedu said, well, maybe it could be a person, maybe it could be a location, maybe it could be something. But if any of you have ideas, because, you know, we've only been open not even a year, and naming it something that's likely to follow up for decades seems like a, like a reasonable thing to do. So if you hear something or have an idea, you reach out to Stephen or I tell Dan. But, but, you know, Crisis Stabilization Center, it's all right. I mean, it is what it, you know, it's okay. But, you know, the marketer in me thinks we could do better. So if you have any ideas on that, we would appreciate some input for that. And, and I can't thank you as representatives of the city enough, because this is why I get to thank you and Mayor Fleetwood, for the cooperation from the city in getting that facility up and running. Without the efforts of the city of Bellingham, it wouldn't have been running when it was. It's a really important, valuable thing. And the city has been an extraordinary ally in, I think, virtually everything the task force has tried to accomplish. Stephen?
Thanks, Jack. And thank you all, council members, for having us both here. Council President Stone, feel free to reach the hook out if, if we're starting to use up too much of your time. I know you all have been in front of a screen for a long time. I'll just note that when the task force first organized, we were given a pretty clear charge in the ordinance, and then that was clarified even further pretty early on by some analysis that we got from the national level through the Vera Institute for Justice. So we, we had our tasks in front of us. They were pretty clear. They were pretty local, and that allowed us to take advantage of what we know the, the culture is in Watcom County, close collaboration, a lot of creativity from a lot of hardworking people. As we've moved to wrap up some of those early charges, we're, we've been in transition to Task Force 2.0, so to speak. And in the course of that, we've been looking for newer focuses, important focuses within our mission. We've got a bigger focus in certain ways, but in some ways, we are out mixing in a larger universe with multiple forces, many of which are beyond our local control. And Jack has touched on a couple of those. I'll touch on a couple of more. So we're in a more complex environment, a more interdependent environment, and the challenges that that brings us have been something that we are working through as we speak. I'll also say that initially, the task force was maybe the primary forum for conversation on criminal legal reform. And I think we took that responsibility seriously, and I think we handled it with considerable, considerable productivity. I think what we're experiencing now is that we are expanding the, the impact of the task force. Many of us come in to membership on the task force out of our own individual professional networks or our personal networks, and some of the conversations in the task force are now flowing out into bigger conversations in the community. No secret that those touch on the need for behavioral health and other support services in the community, the, the rising importance of advancing on racial equity considerations and the overlap of systems, the breaking down of silos in some of the service areas. So the report lays out, for instance, in the Legal and Justice Systems Subcommittee, it lays out the successes of implementing the GRACE program for chronic users of emergency services, but also in the past year and a half, the, the implementation of the LEED program with the federal grant and other funding envisioned first by Prosecutor Ritchie and carried out by the GRACE team under the county health department's leadership. That, I think, probably has gotten a fair bit of attention. In the Legal and Justice Systems Committee, we've also, and I think we've talked to you in the past about the, what we set up with the Superior Court judicial officers for what we've called the Pretrial Processes Work Group. We've developed pretrial services because we learned early on that 60% of the jail population were pretrial detainees, largely people who hadn't been adjudicated yet, couldn't afford bail, and therefore were being held for months and months and months, causing unnecessary jail populations. So the judicial officers and a small work group have been very, very thoughtful in trying to figure out, A, who can we safely release pretrial? Safely means, number one, they're likely to return for the processing their case when it comes up for action in the court. And number two, if, if they are released, that the community will remain relatively safe from new crimes and especially new violent crimes while they are out in the community. That was a very complicated process. The committee, the work group, has finally resolved, and I believe Superior Court judicial officers have begun implementing the use of a screening tool called the Public Safety Assessment coming out of Arnold Ventures, which used to be the Arnold Foundation, and has been, become probably the, the most widely accepted pretrial screening tool in the country. We've just started rolling that out recently. We've had some great help on both the analysis and the, the data accumulation from donated staff from the State Administrative Office of the Courts, which has access to a vast array of criminal history and, and court records. That will be ongoing because the real task, now that, now that we are using that to make pretrial, to inform pretrial release decisions, is, is that, is that tool actually accomplishing what we hope it will accomplish? And besides the, the return to pick up the case, the reappearance in the case and the avoidance of new crime, the other thing that we want, the pretrial release instrument to serve, is the purposes of reducing racial disproportionality, racial disparities, which were flagged in our system and our, and our history by the Vera Institute's final report. So our, our staff advisors from the Administrative Office of the Courts has, has looked at implementation of the PSA, the Public Safety Assessment, in other jurisdictions. It has a very good track record so far of, of improving, reducing racial disproportionality and pretrial releases, at the very least, not exacerbating disparities. So we want to make sure that those three prongs of our goals are actually accomplished in, in the use of that. And the other part that we're working on right now is that in the, in those post-implementation assessments, which we intend to do about every six to 12 months, we will be engaging community involvement, actually involving communities of color who have had some, some qualms, understandably, about the use of a pretrial risk assessment in, in assessing the fairness and the equitability of, of the outcomes that we're seeing from those. So we're underway with the pretrial risk assessment. We have pretrial services established under the Superior Court that will parallel somewhat what district court probation is providing in district court and in municipal courts. And we feel that we'll be able to enhance a reduction in the pretrial decaying population in the, in the jail. The Legal and Justice Systems Subcommittee is now turning its attention to some new areas that it's exploring and will try to develop some particular focuses for that. The main one will be supporting reentry into the community, both upon discharge and release from the jail or return to the community from Department of Corrections. We've had an opening for a position in the jail that did some part-time reentry work. We need more of that. We're facing a hiring problem with that position and, and I'll touch on workforce issues in addition to that in another, another minute. But I think reentry is probably the primary front burner focus for the Legal and Justice Systems Work Group right now. Legal and Justice Systems and the Behavioral Health Work Group, which Councilmember Hamel is co-chairing. And by the way, I want to give my own kudos to Councilmember Hamel for, A, for that leadership and for being really a catalyst and a font of creativity in, in identifying issues and, and promoting solutions for them. We'd be, we'd be far less further along than we are without, without the leadership he lends to the, to the task force. So his Behavioral Health Subcommittee and the Legal and Justice System Subcommittee have, over the last year, recognized an increasing overlap in the workloads of the issues that we take up. When we start to talk about supporting people that we're releasing into the community, those supports are behavioral health supports in many ways. And so those two subcommittees decided that they should have joint meetings to discuss common issues, share information, share, share learning and share, share problem points that we want to work on together. And recently, we've just realized the two meetings, joint meetings a year that we started out working on were not enough even then. So we're going to go to quarterly joint meetings between those two committees. And I think that, that will help us integrate problem solving even more. One of the real accomplishments in the Behavioral Health Committee has been the development that you see coming to fruition on Meridian and I Street, the redevelopment of what is now going to be a recovery house, which is a treatment model that will primarily serve drug court participants with a clean and sober 24/7 supportive housing operation and a treatment model that's evidence-based and will be operated by Lifeline Services. That was, that was and will be operated by Lifeline Services. That was initiated through informal discussions that came about within the task force involving Peace Health, the Opportunity Council, the County Health Department, and certain task force members. And that resulted in Department of Commerce funding of about $9 million for the construction and rehabilitation of that old social detox facility, which had been abandoned for quite a number of years. That's coming online quite soon. And the other progress that the Behavioral Health Committee has made is to take up the part of our title which had been laid aside at the outset, and that is to prevent incarceration, not even to reduce what we have. So again, with a lot of advocacy, skill, and energy from Councilmember Hamel, that's the place that's really decided that we need to try to move upstream and look for ways that we can reduce some of the social determinants that lead to incarceration, and therefore lessen the stream leading into use of the jail. One of the problems Behavioral Health has identified also is, as we start to divert more people from incarceration and into treatment alternatives, we face capacity issues, both in the ability of social service providers and treatment providers to actually provide the volume of treatment we need. And those capacity issues have to do with the fact that we are now out in that broader world where certain entrenched systems, we're ahead of the curve in many ways in pushing out treatment services in the community. So the way behavioral health services are funded, the state agencies, the health plans that provide Medicaid-funded services in the communities, the way they're set up and the way dollars flow, do not fit what we're envisioning for our reform activities. And so Jack mentioned the still unsettled issues of the operational funding for the Crisis Stabilization Center. That's one example of that. The funding for Recovery House 24/7 Support Services and Treatment, that's another operation where we're running into funding issues and systems issues that are impeding where we'd like to go with some of these services. Those obviously are not going to get resolved soon, but we are working on those, and we're working energetically on those. We're starting to get some traction, conversations with state-level players, both in the governor's office and the legislature and administrative agencies. So there's hope there. But it's going to be a long slog. A lot of those efforts have brought us to expand collaborations well beyond the narrow confines of the task force. The Health Department has worked very closely with the Behavioral Health Committee and you all on the council to develop alternative response teams, unarmed response to crisis needs in the community. That's an example of multi-stakeholders coming together to work toward creative solutions. Another example of those is, thanks to your approval, I also serve on the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority. I literally went from one meeting where the Housing Authority was reporting on having to turn back every year a couple of hundred thousand dollars to HUD that would have been available for supported housing for people with behavioral health needs because we didn't have enough case management resources to support that housing. I went from that meeting to Dan's Committee, where we had the lead staff talking about how their case managers were challenged to make stable and sustainable interventions for their client population because they didn't have supported housing opportunities available to give them a baseline to add services on to. And so out of those conversations, we now have a work group that's bringing together the Opportunity Council, the Health Department, the City of Bellingham, Samuel Lutz has been helpful, Lake Watcom Treatment Center, a number of partners. And we're actually making progress to rethink the coordinated entry system for homeless people, to better utilize HUD rental support resources, and the case management resources, the incredible case management resources that the lead team has put together to try to better serve that at-risk population that straddles some of the program initiatives we're trying to take. Other efforts that are seeing collaboration across boundaries are the Health Department's Healthy Watcom Community Health Improvement Planning Process, and in fact, the stakeholder group that's working to bring to the county council a proposal for a Racial Equity Commission at the county level. There are four, maybe five, of us on the task force who are serving on that Racial Equity Commission stakeholder group to try to provide some shape to a proposal that's coming there. As Jack mentioned, racial equity has been, the last year, a commitment of the task force. We agreed to utilize the Racial Equity Toolkit that the Government Alliance on Racial Equity proposes. We're exploring the idea of some form of us, the task force itself, the county council, maybe we'll be talking to you all for the city, of becoming formal members of GARE. But right now, we've adopted the Racial Equity Toolkit, and you can see the list of considerations on page 12 of our report that the toolkit asks us and that we have committed to using as we go through any of our policy recommendations. So we're exploring further support from GARE on how to implement that. Several of us have taken part in webinars with GARE. And to be honest, again, we're a little bit out of head, ahead of many other local jurisdictions. And I think Councilmember Hamel has reported back in the MacArthur Foundation collaborations that the city council has undertaken the last few years, that we seem to be a step or two ahead of many places. So we're not getting as much help, but we might have partners there to work through some of the racial equity considerations. I will point out that two of the things that the Racial Equity Toolkit calls for us to use are to rely on data to drive our policy recommendations and to engage with communities of color and other affected communities before we actually make policy recommendations. Those are challenges that we've had from the outset. The data challenges are particularly onerous because we're finding that we simply do not have the data. It's not that it's siloed. Some of it is siloed, and we can try to break down and exchange data. But others, we simply don't have. We don't have some of the racial categorizations that we need to see if we're actually making improvements there and to hold us accountable to. We don't have data on recidivism, for instance. So we can't tell whether some of the diversion activities that we're putting in place are going to be as effective until we actually start gathering that data. So it really doubles up on the importance of some of those goals that we already had in mind. And the last topic I'll touch on, just to give you a sense of the soup we're swimming in, are some extraordinary really unprecedentedly urgent changes in the legal arena that have come upon us all just in the last couple of months. You've seen, because Mark Gardner has given you a synopsis of some of the measures that were passed by the recent session of the state legislature. Those are extraordinarily broad in scope and deep in the changes that they effectuate. I will try to say on public record, that's probably not the kind of thoughtful, careful policymaking process any of us would want, because the timeframes and the knowledge base for implementing those measures is really lacking. And yet, they are coming on us palme. So how to figure out what to do with those, how to help guide stakeholders in the context of the task force, because part of the strength of the task force is also now one of the challenges. The diversity of the stakeholders sitting at that table also has the diversity of viewpoints on what to do with some of those measures is going to really ask a lot of us. And I know you all will be facing some of those same questions. We hope to work closely with you as we try to come up with some answers to those. Then the other massive legal change is the recent Supreme Court decision in State versus Blake, which was responded to with a patchy temporary kind of response in that packet of legislative measures. But there's a enormous disruption throughout the criminal legal system, the courts, and the drug court program, prosecutions, all of those that deal with low-level drug crimes will be affected by how locally we try to manage the Blake decisions and the ripple effects from that. I'm going to leave it at that and ask if there are any questions, or if there are any areas that came up in the report itself, as you've looked at it, that Jack and I can add some wisdom to for you, so you understand our work better.
Thank you so much. No, I really appreciate it, Jack and Stephen both, for coming and presenting about the good work that's been happening with the task force, but also it highlights the continuing need and workload that we're facing. Let's see, Councilmember Huffman first, and then Vargas.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen and Jack, for coming to talk to us about the task force. The task force and its committees make me incredibly proud to be a resident of Watcom County. I think that there's just such amazing work being done there. And there's -- I'll turn this off, it might be loud. And there's so much more on your plate, too. For fun, in my free time, I watch a lot of the committee meetings and the task force meeting itself. And so just to get myself caught up on what's going on. And the work is just amazing that people are doing in that group. And, you know, one piece in particular that you brought up is the issue with data. And it was shocking to hear that we don't have data to work from, but then also enlightening to understand why we don't and how difficult it is to obtain that data on so many different levels. And so that one seems like a real heavy lift. But I really appreciate that you're trying to tackle that, because we can't really adequately improve what we can't measure. But I just, I don't have any questions, just wanted to say I really appreciate your work, and I really admire your leadership with this group. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Huffman, can I just quickly, for the sake, I know you know this, but maybe others listening don't, while we don't have the data we want, we do have some data, and it is getting better. So I want to make that clear. We don't have no data, but there's certainly a lot of room for more.
I will add my appreciation to you, Councilmember Huffman. You didn't get called out by Jack at the beginning, but I know you've been a participant in many of our meetings. You singularly took on the task of organizing some improvements to the Crisis Stabilization Center as well, which I thought was very creative and just personally enriching kind of step. So I appreciate your involvement in some of the task force's work. And as to the data, I'll just add to Jack's comment. One of the things I had scribbled and noted and left out was our September meeting, which is our next meeting, we've invited for presentation Dr. Alexis Harris, who is a professor of sociology at the University of Washington, and an expert in a number of ranges of data in the criminal justice system, to sort of pick her brain in how to dig into those pockets of data that do exist. Some of them with the Administrative Office of the Courts, some of them with local courts, to try to see if she can help us jumpstart that effort to expand our work on enriching the data that we have available to us.
That's great news. Thank you. And I appreciate your mentioning that I've done some work, but I tend to not be on camera, and I can just roll out of bed and listen. So I'm not doing all that much, but thank you.
Councilmember Vargas.
Thanks so much. First of all, I just wanted to start with a huge thank you, Jack, Stephen, in regards to the time and the commitment, and especially to Councilmember Hamel. You know, when we started this whole conversation, what, 2015 maybe, in regards to, okay, our jail is broken, and we need to figure out some solutions, and just started some really heavy discussions on, you know, reducing who goes into our jails and looking for diversion programs. And we've come a long way. And I like that you mentioned the fact that the city has been the lead on a lot of this. And it's been kind of challenging over the years to get the county to meet us at the table on some programs. And so a lot of progress and a lot of work has been done. And also, you know, the help of Eric Ritchie made a big difference as well. But the time commitment that it has taken, and I particularly want to thank Councilmember Hamel, because he has just been our advocate and our voice in making sure these things happen. So thank you for the progress. Thank you for the update. I have always been, my issue has always been data, right from the get-go. Who's in our jail, and how many times have they been there? And that answer seems so elusive, which is really still gets me. And so if we could get the answer to that question, even starting there, I think would be a huge, huge progress. And obviously, without a baseline or any data, it's difficult to make decisions, and that's where we've been for a long time. In regards to going forward, I think some of the things that I'm really hoping that the task force is able to help with as well is the efficiency of our court system. And you talked about breaking down some of the silos, is right now, especially with COVID, court cases are way behind, and people are waiting so unnecessarily long right now just to get court dates for some simple things. So that, I would like to see our court cases move faster, if we can find a collaboration on that. And I know that there are now additional challenges because of the issues with our municipal court and them only doing five calendars, and they're reduced down to one-third time. So we have a few challenges to work through right now. But I think one of the big focuses I'd like to see is, how do we get people processed through the system as soon as possible? Because some people's lives are on hold, and these are all real people, not just numbers. And that's the things that we always have to keep in mind, is these are people's lives. So I appreciate all the work that you're doing on that. But efficiency, getting people through our court system is great. And then also programs that help reduce recidivism. And so, you know, mental health and any programs that we can have, whether education, et cetera, anything that helps people in regards to recidivism is, I think, helps everyone. And then again, you know, want to give Councilmember credit in regards to prevention. Thank you for the task force to looking at why people end up in jail. And I know Councilmember Hamel has done a lot in regards to looking at programs for our children and in our schools. So our children and in our schools so that we can help people find a different direction and the support they need so they don't end up in jail. So I'm so, you're right, Jack, this is not the sexiest stuff, but it is so important and it makes a difference in regards to, you know, challenges that our children might not face because we're addressing them early, allowing people to be with their families because they have the friendship diversion bracelets. I mean, those have made huge impacts in people's lives. And so this is incredibly important work that you're doing. And I, for one, am so proud of this work and very grateful for everyone who has dedicated the time and commitment for so many years to try and find solutions for us to keep people out of jail or to help them through a transition to find a different way. So thank you.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Thanks, Hannah. Well, I want to echo all the statements of gratitude. I do think that the incarceration reduction task force, one of the best things that's happened for Bellingham and Wauken County in the last four, five years, however long it's been going, precisely because it addresses public safety and justice, not through the law enforcement lens, but through kind of a human centered, people centered lens, as Mr. Hamel refers to it, looking upstream. How did we get here? And let's fix how we got here rather than trying to fix what happened at the end of the process, whatever the breakdown was. Because I don't think most people want to end up getting in trouble with the law. But when it happens, we have to ask how that happened and then go upstream. So I think it's one of the best things that happened in Wauken County. Really appreciate the county government for continuing to support that. And I think you're right, Mr. Hovenier, I saw that in the report, too. You perceived a gap between what the public may know about the work and what the work is. What's being done? Why are you taking the old fashioned approach? And I want to say, we're not. We haven't been adopting that approach that you're talking about for years. That has not been our approach. Originally, it wasn't our approach, just an intention. Now I think it's in an actuality. I do believe that whatever the county can do and task force members can do to increase public awareness, I think will be of enormous benefit. And so then it comes to me, I actually really didn't know about Recovery House. Can you tell me more about that? It sounds like a significant investment of capital dollars to rehabbing the facility. I don't know much about it. Who are the clients? How do they get referred there? How long do they stay? It seems to me like this is not just a short term, you know, emergency housing, but it's more like housing where there's a program and the clients stay for a while. Can someone tell you a little bit more about Recovery House?
I can tell you a little bit, Councilmember Lillquist, and I can forward you some information as well. It's intended, I guess the old terminology might be a halfway house of sorts. We, it started with some conversations with the drug court team over what in the task force we could promote that would make their work more effective. And one of the first things they said, they were blue skying the thing. So it wasn't even, I think, a fully serious suggestion was we have these people for a year, sometimes up to two years with a very rigorous set of demands on them, which involves regular testing and staying clean and sober. And yet we return them to the living arrangements and the friendships and the social environments that were the context for their substance use. And so the hardest thing they said was to keep people on a clean and sober path. If we had more housing that supported that, and we have, we had a little bit, but nowhere near enough, they said we would be much more successful. We would move people through faster, there would be fewer relapses, which drug court is built to tolerate and respond to. And then we'd bring in more people and move them through. So Chris Phillips was on the task force at the time. He said, hey, wait a second, Peace Health has this building we haven't been using for years. And Greg Winter from the Opportunity Council said, well, the Department of Commerce just had an RFP for some rehab money for treatment facilities. And we got together with Ann Deacon and we put together a proposal, we got some rehab money. Ann and some other people vetted some providers and we brought in lifeline services, which hadn't been, either hadn't been any presence in the local community or hadn't been much of a presence, but has a very good track record for this kind of 24/7 support program in an analogous way to the way Pioneers Human Services supports City Gate residents, say, wholly different kind of support, but 24/7 onsite treatment and social support kinds of milieu building. And so it's intended for people to be there six months, maybe, maybe longer. I don't think there's a hard ending to it, but it's also not permanent housing. So it's a stabilization platform that allows people to avoid the distractions, the temptations of their old lives and really, really get some traction with their treatment and have that increase its likelihood of success. Jack, you know something about that?
The only thing that I would slightly add is now Justice Raquel Montoya Lewis was also one of the big advocates. So when she was the drug court judge, you know, the big gap of keeping or getting people to successfully complete drug court often was housing. Because what we know is if you're not stable in housing, your chances of doing everything else deteriorates rapidly. And sometimes when people go to drug court, you know, they might rather do 60 days straight rather than do drug court's hard. And so having more incentives, because what we know is drug court's an evidence-based practice that helps people make meaningful change. So having this housing component for those individuals that otherwise wouldn't have it was a big deal. And she was a huge advocate. I know it's thrilled that it finally is happening.
And I'll just add that it's not exclusively for drug court. That was sort of the impetus for it, but there are lots of people who are not involved in drug court who could benefit from that. You can sort of self-apply. It's something that'll be utilized by the league team because the populations are quite overlapping. It's a community resource and a very needed one.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers?
I would just say in closing, I am, again, to echo how, you know, proud we are of the work being done and really in awe, but also just to highlight how excited I am to hear of, you know, sort of that focus on prevention, which I know Councilmember Hamel has been sort of, you know, yeah, advocating for a long time, but how critical it is. And I see parallels even with, you know, climate action when we say reduce, reuse, recycle, we keep saying, you know, we've recycled and reused things sort of to the extent possible. Now we really need to focus on reducing. And so similarly here, we talk about prevention and reduction. I feel like we've done a lot and made a lot of headway in reducing those numbers, but the prevention key piece is really key because when we think about not wanting to criminalize, you know, homelessness and mental illness and also just chemical dependency in order to make those strides, right? It's going to take a group effort, which it's really exciting to hear about, you know, all the partners that you've identified and really brought together through this work on the task force. So yes, we are indebted and look forward to the work going forward as well.
Councilwoman Stone, when we go back to the task force, would it be fair to say to them that the Bellingham City Council especially appreciates as we're evolving a focus on prevention? Does anyone object to that? Because I'm getting that sense from everybody. And I think it's helpful for the task force to hear what you want from Stephen and I. I mean, Dan's good at articulating your counsel handle, but I think it's helpful if we say, hey, you know, this is one of the areas that Bellingham City Council really was interested in and we'll make sure we pass that on. And Councilman Huffman, thank you for watching our videos. I always wonder if anybody's ever looking, thanks for telling us who you are. I sometimes forget when I'm talking to somebody that I'm recorded, I have to be more mindful. But thank you for tuning in.
Absolutely.
For having us.
Yeah, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon and providing more depth to the, to the report. And we look forward to continued partnership going forward. So thank you very much and we look forward to our paths continuing to cross. So y'all take care. So this afternoon, going forward, we have a set of meeting minutes for review from our last meeting on July 12th. And that was from, we only had one committee that day, committee the whole. It was a long day, but actually only one committee meeting. But those meeting minutes were sent out by Deputy Clerk Oaks. Motion was made by Councilmember Lillquist and a second by Councilmember Knudsen. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, those pass 7-0. And that brings us to old and new business. Councilmember Hamel.
The reason I wasn't at the Public Works meeting this morning was because I was at the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force special meeting. Pardon me. We were voting on whether to send a letter to our state representatives regarding the bills that were just referenced that are complicating responses to behavioral health in particular. There's also some other bills that affect law enforcement. I'm really concerned with House Bill 1310. As of yesterday, there is no immediate response to a behavioral health crisis in the city of Bellingham. So if a person's melting down, not melting down, having a crisis, you know, on the street and a person calls in, virtually nothing will happen. Officers might respond if there's the chance of a crime being committed, but if there was not one, the bill was specific and tells them to leave the area, but that's the terminology. So I'm really concerned about that bill being implemented so quickly. So my, and the, send the letter this morning in part because of process, because we need a full majority of the full task force, not those just present at the meeting. We didn't have everyone there this morning and a number of people abstained because of their positions in the judicial system or whatever the case may be. So long and the short of it is that we don't have a voice in Olympia on that particular bill. And so my ask is, would the council be supportive of having either Leeny or Mark help redraft that letter so it's reflective of the council versus the task force? And then just get that off to Olympia. The request basically is can, would they consider delaying the implementation of House Bill 1310 until the AG, the Assistant, or Attorney General, rather, guidelines are out so at least law enforcement can have an understanding of what it is they're supposed to be doing? So that's my ask right now. And apparently it's very popular, there's a lot of hands being raised.
Bringing that forward, Councilmember Hamel. The hands raised, are those in connection with this item or other old and new items? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Councilmember Hamel, for bringing that forward. I actually was going to ask if there was something that we could make a statement as a council, and you beat me to it, but you, it sounds like there's a draft already. So much further ahead. I've talked to several community members who basically experienced situations in the parks yesterday and Saturday and were really dismayed by like who responds at this point. And I've talked with individuals in our fire department and they're not always the best equipped. They don't have the training and they don't have the equipment. And I'm really concerned we're going to be sending in our firefighters into a situation where someone's going to get really hurt because they don't have the backup. Our emergency services work really well together in tandem, but if they don't have that backup, if things kind of go south, I'm really concerned someone's going to get injured. And it's actually been keeping me up at night thinking about it. And I talked to one of our representatives yesterday about is there any chance at all for there to be an action, a stay until the Attorney General has a chance to weigh in? Because a lot of law enforcement is interpreting it one way and, you know, the last thing they want to do is intervene and lose their job or intervene and, you know, maybe somebody doing a criminal act might be let go because there are a lot of gray areas. And I won't say the individual, but they kind of felt that maybe police were over looking at it to make a point. And I personally didn't feel that way because there's a lot of uncertainty about what they can and can't do. And it sounded like it could be a couple of years out for the AG to be able to really make a decision. So I think not only requesting a stay, but also perhaps another letter encouraging our AG to as swiftly as possible put this on their agenda to bring forward basically a guideline of what this means and what they can and can't do. I think it's incredibly important that we support our law enforcement right now so that they can support our community. We're so much further ahead than a lot of communities in creating an alternative response, an unarmed response. But I think of other municipalities that haven't even begun the process. And you, Councilmember Hamel, know well above many how long we've been working on this and how much work goes into doing it. We don't even know if we can hire the staff at this point because of who's available across the state. So I fully support it. I would suggest that there is possibly two letters. So one to the AG to act swiftly and one to hold off the implementation until that review can be done.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Well, I appreciate that you bring this issue up, but I've been talking to some of our state legislators about this and it seems like it's pretty complex and that people are reading the legislation in different ways. And so in that letter, it's, you know, my support depends on what the letter says, but in that letter, I hope there's a request for further clarification and an alignment of language with intent because the legislators I talked to don't intend the law to be read the way I think it is sometimes being read. I do understand the AG is supposed to be issuing an opinion on how to interpret the language as written. I thought that was coming out soon, like this week or next. If it's not, then we have a problem. So I would just be very careful about waiting in here. And also it was clear from the legislators I talked to, they're totally open to fixing mistakes in the legislative language if it doesn't align with their intent. I'm just not clear where the misunderstanding is coming from, whether it's in the language or whether it's the people reading the language. AG's office can help decide that. It's a complicated issue and so I can't weigh in entirely in support of the issue, but I certainly can endorse the idea that we need to kind of get, all get on the same page and if there is a problem, then we need to fix it. So I'm definitely in favor of fixing the problem. And I think by communicating with our representatives, that's one way of getting to a solution if needed.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yeah, I'm completely in support of this. I did have a conversation, one of the ones that Michael and I were included in with representatives and representative from the governor's office as well. And there is a lot of confusion and people are not sure what to do. So everybody's in recognition of that. And I believe what they said was that it was going to go to the AG's office last Friday. So it went to their office for review last Friday. So I don't know when, what their timeline is like, but if we could ask for a pause, I think until we all have clarity and the tools to decide how to go forward, I think a pause is in order and I support that.
Councilmember Huffman.
I also support drafting a resolution. And I've heard some of the concerns about maybe some misinterpretation of intent. And I think the big thing here is there hasn't been enough time to figure that out. There hasn't been enough time to figure out what the response is going to be if police officers can't respond unless there's a criminal element. And I think that that is, you know, a well-intentioned piece of legislation could potentially harm the very people that it's intended to help. And so I'm quite concerned that if people aren't responding to situations... that if people aren't responding to situations before they escalate, they will escalate into violent and harmful and criminal behavior if there's not somebody there to intervene, which is exactly what we're trying to build with the ART. It's just, we're not ready, and we're ahead of a lot of communities. And if other communities are even further behind, I just, I really fear that a lot of people are going to be harmed if this doesn't get straightened out.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamel, is there a, do we need a formal motion to send this forward, or, and/or whether there were any edits pursuant to what Councilmember Anderson included as well? And then, I see Mayor Fleetwood.
I'm happy to, I think that's actually a good idea to have the two letters to, so the AG understands our concerns and our reps do as well. I do, I do want to speak just real quick, I know we're kind of over time here, that the ART is going to be further out than I think we think it's going to be. And it's dependent on workforce issues, someone that was covered in the last presentation. Behavioral health specialists are very hard to come by. They get lured into the higher-paying markets like Seattle, Tacoma, and points south. If you'll recall, this council supported the acquisition of two community paramedic rigs over 18 months ago. They're still not here. So, that part of it, and the ART needs specialty rigs. They have to have the radio equipment, oxygen, other elements that make them a specialized vehicle. And so, those are going to take a while, too. At this point, I'm ready to break the lock at the surplus at the Public Works and just, like, grab a couple trucks and see what we can do, but I don't think that would be very good. So, but I just want you to know that. So, we really are in a pinch here. And so, getting that letter off, at least sharing our concerns, and thanks, councilmembers, for contacting our state reps. I'm glad that you're on board with that part of it. And if I need, I'll make a motion that, to direct Dan Hamel to, with our support staff, to draft a letter for this council's review. And thank goodness, we're meeting next Monday, so we can turn this around pretty quick. So, I will, that's my motion.
Second. Okay, motions were made by Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Mayor Fleetwood.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to indicate that the administration's happy to join you in that letter. I also want to communicate that our office has already been in communication with the governor's office and expressing the need for, or the idea of inquiring as to whether or not there can be any extensions on that date and whether it can be amended until we have the resources available to address it. Also, just want to remind people, so we don't put out information that's not accurate to the public, we continue to urge people, when something happens, to call 911. The police will, I think it was indicated that they can't respond. No, they can continue to respond, and they will continue to respond. They will be limited by this legislation in having the tools that are available to them as it relates to how they're able to respond. But we want to continue to urge people and remind people that they should still call 911, and there will be a police response available. Meanwhile, we continue to actively work on alternative response. So, if you produce a letter, we are happy to join you in submitting that and signing it.
Thank you, Mayor Fleetwood. So, there's a motion from Councilmember Hamel and a second by Councilmember Anderson to have those letters sent to, to the AG's office as well as to our representatives. And I believe that Councilmember Hamel and our council staff will work to finalize that and bring it forward next week. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that passes seven zero. Any of you have other matters for old and new business? Seeing none, I have one. You thought you were almost done and that we were headed to executive session, but we are not. So, I wanted to take an opportunity to discuss some events that have transpired since our last meeting on July 12th, as related to public comment during council meetings and the city's YouTube channels. So, as many may be aware, you know, under the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, it was not really practical or permissible for me to correspond with the full council in advance of today's meeting. And therefore, I just want to take some time to provide background as well as current status updates on this dynamic situation to the full council as well as members of the public. And so, briefly, I just want to first share my screen, just in case you haven't seen it, on our council website. Let me click Share. If you're able to see that. So, this is on our council website. It's one of the banners across the top, that if you click on it, there is a summary of issue, the issue as well as some background, a statement from myself as well as additional details. So, just wanting people to know that this will continue to be updated, but that that is available on our website. And so, basically, in response to video coverage of the July 12th City Council regular meeting being pulled from YouTube, I did make a very difficult decision to suspend live public comment period for this evening. So, this decision, rest assured, was not made lightly. And I recognize that live public comment is an instrumental part of an effective democracy. However, I also want to state that here in Washington, we are not required to host a live general public comment period during our council meetings when speakers can comment on topics of their choosing. Please note that this is different, right, from legal requirements that pertain to topic-specific public hearings like the one we'll have this evening. Those are required by law and will not be impacted by this pause. So, when we host live public comment period, it's subject to important freedom of speech protections pursuant to the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. And I want that to be extremely clear, that this means that when we make the decision, right, we're not required to have a live public comment period, but we make the decision to have a live public comment period, we're tied to those protections of freedom of speech. And at that time, we are only able to implement content-neutral restrictions. So, this suspension, I want to be very clear, is not a solution. I don't see this as a solution. It's not something that I wanted to do, but rather a pause, in order to preserve uninterrupted public access to our meetings. And so, this is extremely important because of the potential risks if we continue to hold public comment at this time without further processes in place, right? And so, at this time, the suspension, I want to say, relates only to live general public comment. And in the interim, members of the public can still present public comment in lots of different ways, right? You are still able to email us, send correspondence to the council office, use Engage Bellingham online as well as phone. So, I also want to note that the city has still not received notice from YouTube to indicate that the July 12th video has been reinstated, nor have we received assurance that the matter is resolved. And so, the city was issued a warning from YouTube when the video was initially pulled. The city appealed that decision, and the appeal was denied. It's my understanding that this deletion and warning is the first step in YouTube's strike process. And additional strikes could result in the deletion of the city's YouTube channel. And so, furthermore, each strike not only impacts our council videos and that access to the public, but also comes with intermediate penalties that could cause delays to the city's other non-council video work. And so, I want to be very clear that we're all on the same page and know what sort of is at risk as we go forward. And so, I have requested that Marty Mulholland, who's the Director of Information Technology Services Department here with the city of Bellingham, join us briefly this afternoon. I know this is not on the agenda, and that's why it's under old and new business, because this is new business. And so, requesting that Marty join us to cover some additional facts and background. So, thank you very much, Marty.
Good afternoon, council. This is, I'm happy to be here to provide some additional facts and context, and want to acknowledge Janice's help in communications and outreach in our internal steps as well. And I have a PowerPoint I'll share right now, and hoping you can see that.
We can.
Okay. So, I'll provide a brief update on council video platforms. And what I'd like to cover today is this recent YouTube violation and the action steps the city took. And then, we'll back up to describe the city's history and use of online video platforms, and then return to the current issue and challenge before the city. So, as Council President Stone stated, the city's July 12th meeting was given a warning, and it was issued by YouTube based on medical misinformation testimony that is part of a YouTube policy. The city appealed the warning, and the appeal was denied. So, then, we had to take some action steps. And in taking these action steps, I want to share with you the goals that were considered. First is that the video content be available to the public to meet transparency goals. I've been working for the city for 18 years now, and I know how important that is. But I also wanted to avoid risk to the city's YouTube presence, which I'll describe in a moment. So, the sequence of events was, on July 12th, that meeting video, we moved it to an alternate hosting platform, which made the video available to the public. And so, our links point at that new, the same video, but on a different technology. It meant that the meeting video was available to the public, but without the benefit of the integrated agenda bookmarks that allow members of the public to choose specific moments on the agenda and topics of the agenda and see just that video. We then, the meeting content on the YouTube platform was deleted by us. Because of the YouTube strike system, we also recognized we, our YouTube platform was at risk because there were other meetings that contained similar public comments. So, those meetings, I believe it was eight total, were also migrated to an alternate platform, and links were provided to the public. With much thanks to Janice for her assistance, prominent updates were posted that were just shown to you. And I'd also just like to mention, the circumstance is not unique to Bellingham. It's occurring in other communities where YouTube is a part of their communications platforms. So, a quick history on our use. YouTube, you may know, it is the most popular video hosting and streaming platform available. It has worldwide acceptance. It provides closed captioning. It also provides an excellent mobile experience. And what I mean by that is, you can play YouTube videos on a smartphone, on an iPad, and it's intelligent in the way it does that. And that's really important because a high percentage of the public accesses our materials via smart devices, not by computers. We began using YouTube in 2006, so that's 15 years ago. We began by posting our video content typically generated by BTV. So, we have a robust library of on-demand content that has been maintained for many years. We then began live streaming the council meetings in approximately 2014. I don't have an exact date, but I'm fairly confident it was 2014. So, in 2014, we began covering the council meetings live, both on the cable systems and on our BTV livestream. And that livestream shows our BTV channel 24 hours a day, just as it would on the cable system. That's also important to reach those that have internet access but do not have cable system access. Finally, we wanted to tackle some additional improvements. We learned of some additional technology available related to agenda systems. We wanted to provide the public with that agenda video-integrated experience. It was first implemented in April 2014. And then, when the system went through an upgrade in January 2018, we began using YouTube. And again, that allows members of the public to look at meeting agenda items and see the video associated with that decision, along with all the other materials related to that topic. So, you might ask, gosh, we, could we switch to alternate platforms really quickly? Well, I'll just note, in the research we've done in this short time period, some of the most popular platforms have similar policies regarding medical misinformation. So, that isn't a quick solution, and none of these solutions are super quick. BTV, we haven't really identified an effective alternative thus far. And relating to your meetings, we do have an option of switching to an alternate platform, but it would be at significant cost, provide lower quality and less accessible experience for the public. So, back to our current issue and the issue before us. Based on the YouTube policies, if the city allows medical misinformation to be discussed during council meetings, then we have two YouTube live streams that are at risk. One is the BTV livestream, and one is the meetings livestream. And also, each of those two YouTube channels or accounts has a video library, one with 15 years of content and one with nearly four years of content, the meetings video library. So, the recommendations that I've made and we've discussed internally were around preserving this investment in YouTube right now, and continuing our efforts to contact YouTube regarding its policies. And Janice may speak up here in a moment to address that, but thus far, I think we've only received the equivalent of a form letter back in some additional outreach that Janice made to YouTube. Certainly wanted to discuss alternatives with policymakers. And regretfully, this will involve the county council, because they submit their programs to us, and those air on our BTV YouTube channel. And due to that, I've reached out to our city attorney, Alan Mariner, and gave Mayor Fleetwood a heads-up. My plan, unless this discussion right now goes in an incredibly different direction, is to notify the county council and request that they not submit video to the city if their meeting contains information that violates the YouTube policy. Because if they do that and we air that material, it also puts our channel at risk. So, that was a ton of information. I hope it makes sense to you. Then I'm available to answer questions, and Janice, please feel free if there's something I missed.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to add. I just popped on in case there's questions that I can answer.
Okay. And the confirmation was just as of yet, there's been no substantive response from YouTube?
No, I've heard nothing back.
Okay, thank you for that. And so, in recognizing time as well as the scope of what's being presented to you, I see two issues that I would like to bring back at our next meeting, since we do not have the typical one-week gap. We will meet again next Monday, August 2nd, is to bring forward a work session of the full council to look and discuss, you know, YouTube platform and YouTube platform options, but the platform for videos is currently at issue. And the second item is public comment, so live public comment and the options for that as well, how to preserve that engagement and transparency. So, Councilmember Knutson, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just want to say this. I want to publicly support you in what you're doing as council president, because I had to do it last year. I had to suspend public comment for a while, and I love all the politicians out there, "Oh, I would never do that." I don't agree with that. That's just demagoguery, is all that is. Because I will tell you, we have, do not have a long history of public comment at the Bellingham City Council. Councilwoman, Council President Louise Bjornson started it in 1992. And when I was first elected, we had people come to our meetings and talk about growth issues, neighborhood issues, all sorts of issues that we needed to know about. Last year, we got hit by defunding the police, racial unrest, homelessness, and it turned into the most vulgar language in the history of the Bellingham City Council meetings. Now, we have people coming to us and promoting things that are killing people. Now, we can't have that. Public comment has been out of control for years. We need to really take a look at it. One suggestion that was brought up by Dick McKinley, who left us and went to Tacoma, was when you come forward to public comment, it has to be something on the agenda. Now, I know a lot of people don't like that, and then the others will say, well, I like, well, I'll call him out. I did not like the article I read last Sunday, where it said Councilman Red Brown said he'd stay there till 6:00 a.m., till 6:00 p.m. and listen to. where it said Councilman Red Brown said he'd stay there till 6:00 AM till 6:00 PM and listen to all that stuff. Well, go ahead, Red, go ahead. I mean, that's not what it's all about and that's not democracy to have to listen to all this stuff sometimes. So no, uh, decision was tough, but I, I support you 100% and the staff 100% in trying to keep us on YouTube. Because when our meetings were taped, a lot of people knew what happened long before the meeting came out. So to keep us live on television, I think is essential and whatever it takes to keep us live on, on, and the county council needs to know that too, so.
So I just want to be clear of what I'm requesting at this time, which would be, I mean, I'm not going to cut off discussion. I certainly don't want to lay this out there and then not have council members respond. But just to restate that I'm requesting to, I believe it would ultimately require, unless we receive further correspondence from YouTube, um, but in that absence, it would be suspending the live public comment for our next meeting as well on August 2nd and having a work session on the agenda where we will discuss at length video platforms and public comment. Um, Councilmember Lillicust.
Well, I, I support, uh, you Hannah in doing whatever you can to find a resolution to this. We have two challenges. One is technical. If we have to have an alternate platform, what is it? What are the technical details? And the other of the policy matters we need to discuss. I think we need to err on the side of letting people say things, even if they're untrue, uh, even if they're misleading, even if they're kind of endangering. Um, because we have this peculiar obligation, uh, high obligation to allow free speech. But that means that we have to kind of segregate and put ourselves someplace that allows that complete freedom. It's kind of uncomfortable, it's kind of a shame. I wish we didn't have to like find a place for us to go to, uh, allow people to misbehave. And that's really what it is. We're going to be able to have to allow people to misbehave so that everyone can speak on any topic, um, that, that's important. Um, I've had, one misunderstanding I want to clear up is some people have said, well, if you just went back to meeting in person, all this would go away. And that's exactly not true. Because whether we're in person or by Zoom, the problem is what people say, not whether they're in a room together or looking at each other by Zoom. It's what people say being broadcast triggers these problems. It's not the council's presence or lack of presence, it's what the people who are coming said. We can't resolve that by, by, by meeting in some other situation because it has to be broadcast. So I, I support you trying to find a solution. I want a solution as fast as possible.
And thank you for highlighting that distinction, Councilmember Lillicust, because I've heard similarly, um, yeah, comments about us returning in person. And so it's not about us attending remotely by video. It's the video recording that's broadcast on BTV and then housed, um, on YouTube and also broadcast on YouTube, um, but through that livestream. So Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I greatly appreciate and, um, value the public comment period. Uh, sometimes things are not on our agenda. And I've been a citizen who's come forward in front of city council to raise concerns and issues that wasn't on the agenda. And sometimes it was a good primer and a council member took up the question on, um, our neighborhood behalf to ask staff. So, um, I think good things often come from it. Um, I also support you. So, um, as people have weighed in and felt that it was unconstitutional or that you as a council president was being heavy-handed to limit people's voice or freedom of speech, that is not the case. Um, until we have a better solution, which we will find, um, we can't risk having the information not available to the public. I mean, it's, it's one thing that can cause a lot of very valuable information, um, not getting out to our citizens easily enough. Um, I do hope that we can look at something less reliable on YouTube. But a question I'll have for staff to maybe bring back, um, as part of that discussion, I do support this being a work item, is often on, um, YouTube, if the content is somewhat questionable, there's a disclaimer. So could we have a disclaimer before public comment begins where that thing comes up on screen and says that these are independent, you know, these may not be facts, you know? There are statements that are made before content comes up on a video that basically holds YouTube not liable for and perhaps not counsel, that these are just individuals' opinions and their facts and statements may not be truthful. Could something like that be implemented at the beginning and suffice as a disclaimer to YouTube so that we do not get an infraction? Just curious, because there's a lot of stuff on YouTube that get these warnings. So, um, maybe we just need a warning later.
We, we have not heard of that. Before you respond, Marty, I just want to highlight the fact that this meeting will end at 4:30, whether we are done or not, and I need to announce executive session as well. So go ahead.
I'm not aware of that. Um, I'd just also like to let the council know I'm, I have limited availability. Would be happy to continue this discussion next week and we'll ask staff to do some research to support it. But it'll be a little bit more ad hoc, um, next week.
Councilmember Vargas.
I'll be really quick. I just want to say I support the decision that you have made. Um, I think it's the right decision. Uh, and honestly, I've been very, um, felt very uncomfortable about some of the comments and felt that, um, because we are sharing them, that we are complicit in, um, contributing to misinformation. And that doesn't feel super good to me when we're having all these discussions about how to reduce COVID vaccination, et cetera. Um, so it, it feels contrary to what we, what we've been standing for and the leadership we've been trying to provide. So I'm, I'm really, I have been struggling with this. Um, and if I understand your comments, um, President Stone, you're saying that we cannot specify in public comment, uh, we won't be taking any conversation about vaccines. So we cannot say that in public comment as a qualifier and say, no, we won't have those conversations. It's either all or nothing. Is that, is that what I'm to understand?
Any restrictions, pardon me, that we put in place need to be content neutral. Um, so I have heard from legal that, I mean, we could say it needs to relate to city business. Defining that to me seems, um, difficult. I believe that almost everything touches city business in some way, shape or form. Um, so it is difficult. And I, I, and I know that there are varied opinions as a council and that's why I want the full council to have this discussion. So it's not me as an individual making these decisions. I mean, happy to do so if it's necessary, as it was, not happy to do so. But I will assume that role and take the, the heat and, um, own that as I did last week. But I wanted support from the council, since we are here as a whole, um, to come back next Monday and have a discussion. I will say, you know, I've never been satisfied since public comment has been restricted to 15 minutes. I'm not satisfied. I believe that is perfunctory where we are checking a box to say that we're doing it. It's not beneficial to the public, it's not beneficial to council. We need to make sure that our council meetings are productive and that we are able to take council action and conduct council business. But we also need to find a time to engage with the public in a meaningful way. And this is not it. Um, and so the silver lining to me is that this is going to force these discussions to come forward where hopefully we will find, um, you know, some opportunities in the future that are going to increase engagement and transparency. So I don't know that it needs to be a full motion or a formal vote, but, um, yeah, I guess my request is that we come back on Monday to have a work session on these two issues. Is there any objection to that? Okay. Um, seeing none, I appreciate the time and I appreciate the patience of the public as well as we navigate this difficult time, um, and encourage individuals to continue to reach out um, to us through the other avenues available at this time and to look for further developments um, next week, August 2nd. So if there's nothing further for Old and New Business, um, this afternoon, we do have an executive session. There are two items before us. The first is potential litigation with ERB for approximately 15 minutes. And the second is litigation Lev versus City of Bellingham with DeJulio for approximately 20 minutes. Um, and I'll request that we just have a brief, a briefest of brief breaks, um, before starting that executive session. Um, and for now, we are adjourned and will reconvene this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much for your time.